Okay, everybody. Thank you. All right. Thank you all for your patience and welcome to the May 18th Board of Education meeting. I am looking for a motion to start our public session.
Motion from Tom.
Thank you. And a second, a second from Christine. Okay, I have a motion from Tom and a second from Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you. All right. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, everybody. See if we can get this together. Okay, ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free and just for all.
Tell you run a preschool, Jen, the way you ran that.
Here we go. All right. So we don't have to talk about emergency exits because you all know how to get out of your own houses. Let's go over to the board approvals. So I am looking for a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of May 11th, 2020. Can I get a motion, please?
Linda.
Thank you, Linda, and a second from Xavier. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. All right. That moves us down to Board Member Communications and Announcements. Does anybody have anything they want to say?
Sure, I'll go. Our spring sports and clubs were cut short due to the virus, and I'm going to take a few moments to recognize two of the clubs of the many. I would like to congratulate this year's mock trial team on their hard work and dedication. The team put in tremendous amount of time in preparation for the competition. They were undefeated heading into the county tournament ranked fourth in the county. And I don't have a doubt in my mind that the team was poised to lift the county trophy once again and vie for a state title. Several members of the 2018 county championship team are in the 2020 graduating class and did not have an opportunity to compete as a result of the shutdown. And some of the graduating seniors have been on the team since they were in ninth grade. It is a bittersweet ending to our season, but I'm confident that we will see those students blazing their trails of success in future endeavors. The robotics team was in mid-season when it was cut short. Fortunately, Team 5016 was able to complete their infinite recharge robot named Smokey. Smokey can be viewed in action on the school website. This year's graduating class had the vision to create a sustainability guide in order to provide direction for future members of Team 5016. This 2020 Infinite Recharge Games will be replayed in 2021. To the graduating seniors of the robotics team, your energy and vision will always be remembered and appreciated. Smokey the robot will compete in 2021 for the heart of 2020. That's it.
Very nice, Xavier. Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything that they want to share?
I'll just say thank you again to everyone who is still working, every teacher. You know, we had a meeting this week that was flawless, excuse me, last week. We had a Chrome book issue and the new one turned up on our front porch the next day. So, you know, it doesn't happen without a lot of hard work from a lot of people and really some amazing work going on.
I totally agree with you. Thank you, Linda. Anybody else? Okay, Jim, I think that brings us to you.
Okay. Obviously, there is a great deal going on here behind the scenes and in front of the scenes. Latest, the governor's executive order, most recent, shut down this area through the end of the month. As per the way our calendar fell, and there's a lot of, I just want to make sure the board and the general public realizes that there's a lot that goes into every decision that we make right now. There are districts that are all over the map in terms of calendar for the rest of the year. Some did have their spring break, some didn't. We have pretty much gone in uninterrupted fashion from the onset of the global pandemic. That's why the communication went out on Friday that we're going to stop the live instruction as of June 17th. And the calendar is not on the agenda this evening because I'm still not 100% sure that nothing or anything is going to come from either the state or the state education department indicating that we must or must not do this. So before anything is formally done, I want to make sure that we're not taking action prematurely. It sounds like it shouldn't be premature because we're less than a month away or a month plus away, a little bit more than a month. But right now, assuming that it is in our hands, our last day for instruction and some adjustments made for some of the actions and activities that need to take place at the end of the year for elementary and secondary level buildings, June 17th is going to be that day. So that, I hope that provides some clarification as to why we're ending then. Recall that our spring recess was not on the calendar this year as it probably would have been or definitely would have been if this had not occurred. Just my sincere regrets for all those students taking advanced placement exams last week that experienced the unfortunate episode in terms of submitting their work and having it not be submitted. I will say with the help of Jeanette Alamea, who is our Director of Guidance, we have been pretty much hounding and pounding the college board. They were not prepared for this. While the vast majority of kids, students taking exams around the world probably did not have an issue, if it happened to just a handful, it's a handful too many. And, you know, we can send our message, I believe, myself and my colleagues around the world who voiced our opinions about this whole thing, did get them to take some action in terms of an email backup. Unfortunately, it doesn't look like it's going to help those kids who were in that position last week. So I feel terrible for them. They have made as many guarantees as they can make that this is not going to happen again in June. But this should have been planned for better. It should have been planned for more comprehensively. It should have been planned for in a more research-based tested manner. And again, my sincere hope is with the backup plan in place that there won't be a problem moving forward because if kids can't submit, there is a way they can get those answers and submissions via email to the college board folks who are going to be grading this material. So that's been a time-consuming piece of last week and over the weekend. And we're still waiting for some other pieces in terms of APPR and evaluations at the end of the year. There's still been no executive order driving that. And there's a lot of things taking place at the district level that need to move forward. That includes registration. It includes plans for end-of-year festivities. It certainly includes a plan for commencement exercises, which will be looking like they'll take a number of different forms and a number of different contingencies based on what we can and can't do. And the reopening process is something that we're going to have to start. We have started planning for already, and it's going to be an ongoing process, what it looks like, what form it takes. Time will tell, but it's going to have to be something that obviously is permissible and obviously is something that takes into account the basic order needs, safety first. So this is where we are. We're in constant contact with our neighbors. We're in constant contact with the county. We're in constant contact with the state. And we are going to do the best we can to keep those communications as thorough and as ongoing as possible so people know where we are and know what to expect. And I will leave it at that.
All right. Thank you very much for that information. All right. At this point, we're to our first public commentary section. So if anybody out there that has joined us for the meeting has a comment that they would like to make, now would be your time. There are just a few rules. When you ask your question, please let us know your name and your affiliation to the district. You have three minutes to address the board and the administration. And we ask that you don't use any personal names of students or teachers. These should just be general comments or questions. All right. So I'm going to open it up, and Mr. Plansky is going to look around and see if he sees any hands or indications of questions.
All right. Either on your screen or you can use the thumb or the clap. Just hit the icon so I know to unmute you. And at the end, I'm going back through.
I will say there is a whole nother section at the end for public commentary again. So if something should come up or you have a question or something occurs to you during the rest of this meeting, you can stay put and you'll have a whole nother shot at it.
One more time. Okay, Jen.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. So that moves us, let's see, down to items for discussion and action. And the first one would be, I'm sorry, it's really small on my screen. It was going to be the 2019-20 readjusted calendar, which is what we see in front of us. So this is the amended calendar. Do you want me to get the motion and the second first, and then you can explain what's going on?
Yes, please.
Okay. So it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve the amended calendar for 2019-20 meetings. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion. Michelle.
Okay. So I think I heard Xavier make a motion and Michelle a second.
Okay. The calendar was essentially re-adopted at the last meeting. Realize what we typically do after a vote election is we certify the results of that election during the June meeting. That said, our June meeting is now before the budget vote election. So I spoke to Jen briefly and asked if we could add the June 22nd, 2020 meeting for consideration this evening for a number of different purposes, primarily for certifying vote and election. It should be done before the next school year begins, so that's first and foremost. And there probably will be after the vote and election, certain end-of-year procedural actions and personnel matters that need to be addressed on the 22nd. So I'm asking for, yeah, one more meeting will probably be remote, but one more meeting before the year is over, Monday, June 22nd.
Sounds very reasonable to me. I'm sure there'll be loose ends that need to be wrapped up given where the election is falling in our calendar. So did anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Plansky before we go ahead and vote? Okay, we had a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you very much.
Just trying to prolong your year, Jen.
Wouldn't you think you've got more?
Doing a bang-up job of it, Jim. So that brings us to the second item for discussion and action, which is of course our 2021 School District Budget and Property Tax Report Card Presentation.
Okay, I'm going to do this quickly, but not quickly enough where questions can't be asked. So please, for those that have questions on this, the public commentary, the second public commentary would be a great time to ask them. We went through some additional details last week. What we were hoping would happen before tonight would be being provided with a little bit more information in terms of state revenues. On Friday, he seems to be presenting that type of information on Fridays, he being our governor. Nothing was provided. We are flying a little bit blind in terms of our revenues. The, that side of the ledger is a little bit unclear, but I think what we've done here makes sense. So let me go through it quickly. What's being recommended this evening was discussed last week at length. That column in the center, number is exactly the same as we left them on May 11th. We did do some significant changing between the March 23rd presentation, which was the last full presentation made prior to all of the new pandemic-related shifts being made. The budget now sits at 135, 938, 167. Back in Jan, back in March, when we had presented that near-close-to-tax levy limit budget, we were over 137 million. So we've done considerable work to get to this point. And I do want to remind the board that we were able to do this, keeping our staff and our programs intact. So at this point, that budget sits where it is. The revenue, the increase in revenue is certainly not in state aid. That's a reflection of a number of different things, but primarily increased use of reserves and appropriated fund balance. The tax levy is at 112, 350 even. Notice that is 466, 249 below our established tax levy limit. And the other percentages are identical as far as where we were on May 11th. So 1.77% tax levy increase, budget to budget 184, and the tax rate assessment is there per 100. Tax rate and tax levy increases are the same because we have built in a flat assessed value from 2019-20 to 2020-21. So those are your summative numbers. Key figures are here. And for those who may not have joined us last week, we've really been grinding and trying to drill down in every code to do the things that we feel are right for the kids in this district and are right for the people who live in this community, taxpayers included. Not an easy feat when you're dealing with uncertainties, with unknowns, but just to give you a sense of the types of things we were thinking about when this budget was rebuilt, I should say, district mission, district mission, vision, core beliefs. Now, we made a concerted effort to maintain our instructional and extracurricular programs. That includes, obviously, certain cuts in areas where we felt that enrollment was going to lead to those cuts regardless, maintains existing staff. We were able to do a little bit of trimming based on retirements and people who were not going to return regardless. And it was not an easy thing to do to shift things around, to get things to where we believe they're going to address the needs that will exist come September, come the summer for that matter, because we started on July 1 with the new budget, the new fiscal year in school terms. This budget responds to the fiscal realities. We are trying as best we can to anticipate post-pandemic needs. And I will tell you, when schools reopen, some of the things that are going to have to be addressed, we're going to have to have PPEs, personal protective equipment, in use in different ways and in ongoing manner. We're going to have to deal with cleaning and disinfecting in a whole new, in a whole new way, shape, and form. And there'll probably be a range of compensatory services that have to be laid out for students who are in need on an individual basis. So those are all accounted for here. We're also obviously taking into account what we believe will be a reduction in state aid. Hasn't happened formally yet, but all signs point to the fact that it is more than likely, very likely, almost certainly going to occur. The capital proposition still addresses building infrastructure needs, and that's not money that needs to be collected at this point from taxpayers. It's already there. And we are also doing the best we can to consider and anticipate long-term financial planning that relates to large-ticket items like teacher retirement system and health insurance and employee retirement system. These things are tough to predict, but we can kind of conservatively hope for the best, but prepare for the worst. And that's, in essence, what we're doing with one year's worth of budget in 2021. All right, assessed value, we apparently have a new assessor in the town office. Roger, Roger Ram is still going to be there in part-time capacity, but it looks like the new assessor is Lisa Leonik. She responded very quickly with the assessed value in this school district, about $3,400. It's not your market value of a home. This is the number that's used to calculate your tax bill. Last year, that average value was 3415. This year, it's 3,400. And based on the budget we've built, the average assessed value being 3,400, estimated annual tax increase, that figure in front of you, 14756. And then a range of 2,000 to 5,000, just to give you a sense of what, depending on the assessed value of your home, what your tax bill might look like. The propositions on the ballot, there are four. We've been working very diligently, and I know Joanne is in the background somewhere. Of the work that had to be done on this particular ballot was significant. I'll leave it at that. Because A, it's all absentee this year, as we discussed at the last meeting. I'll remind again, there is no onsite voting. I should have received a postcard alerting you to that, every household in the Huntington School District. By June 9th at 5:00 PM, the ballot must be returned. It should be mailed, I'm going to say on or about May 29th. It's an eight-and-a-half-by-14 piece of paper, double-sided, two languages. It's got the budget as proposition number one. It's got the capital reserve proposition, number two. And a reminder that the capital work that's planned for this summer, I'll show you in a minute, but that is money that's already in the capital reserve accounts designated only for capital work. If it's not approved, it just goes right into the bank and sits, earning very little interest in this day and age. The third item on the ballot will be the Huntington Union Free School District Board Candidates. There are four of them. And the final item on the budget is actually the Library Board Candidate. The executive order that the governor issued, I think it was 2026, allowed the library, just based on the situation that we're all dealing with, to place their candidate on our ballot. And they are helping us financially to support the cost of the absentee ballot process. So there are four items, and we hope you'll take all four into account. Just to go back to the capital proposition for a minute, I did include this after the fact in last week's presentation, but it's included formally here, just so you can see what that second proposition will do for us. We discussed that length on March 9th. The solar panel project, we'd like to do that in all of the primary schools, but just based on the money available, this is, this will eventually pay for itself. The solar panels, we decided to start with southbound just based on where the building is situated and how it faces. So we able to clean the most from the solar process. That's a $340,000 outlay, but again, over time, I think it was seven years, the savings will basically pay for this. The roof replacement is something we've been doing gradually throughout the district. The high school roof is too big to do all at once. We did a chunk last year. We do it, we're doing a chunk this summer, and we hope to do another chunk in the summer of 2021. Finley Middle School, two boilers, two science, two science rooms connected by a prep room. Those rooms are ancient, and in order to run our science program in the manner we believe it needs to be run and safely, that needs to be redone. And then the auditorium of the Jack Abrams St. Magan School. So there are $3,000, $3,640,000 worth of capital projects in that second proposition. Again, this is at no cost to the taxpayer. This is money in the reserve accounts that's been built over the past 10 years. Also in there, just as a little side note, just to make sure that we get the aid on the Finley Locker Project that will take place this summer, we're just shifting 20,000 of the monies on paper to the floor around the lockers. Doesn't change anything that happened last, last May. It doesn't change anything about the project. We just needed to reframe it in the right way so that we can, we can gather the aid on the project after the fact. Our aid ratio is about 38%, so any capital outlay, this is another important piece, any capital outlay for something like what you see here, we get about 38% of that money back in future years. That's our school district aid ratio.
Can I just add one thing about our capital projects? I just want to remind people that not only is the money already allocated to cover these particular projects, but that anytime you go forward, things only get more expensive. So there's, there's a good and logical and reasonable reason to, you know, take on projects currently because the longer you put them off, the more expensive they are when you ultimately do them.
Well, I can tell you now that because of the volume of the firms that may be bidding on these projects that are looking for work right now, with the money in hand already, this is a very good time to do this work.
Yeah. I bet. There's people anxious to do work. Jim, just a little aside, I think Christine may be muted.
She's probably thinking I did that on purpose.
No, I She had a little difficulty. Yes, there.
I had to rejoin.
Glad you're back.
Thank you.
And Jen, to add to that, just to remind people again that the money cannot be used for anything else. For anything else.
Right.
Another important thing.
There are a number of different reserve accounts that we have in district, as do most districts. Whatever that reserve account is, the money that's there can only be used for that purpose. So for example, we have capital reserve accounts only for capital projects. We have a retirement system reserve account that can only be used to allay costs for retirement system costs, whether it be ERS and other sub-reserve for TRS. Employee benefits and accrued liabilities can only be used for employee benefit and separation-type payments. Workers' compensation reserve can only be used for workers' comp payments. Unemployment reserve can only be used for that purpose. If we don't use it for that purpose, it can't be used for anything else. So it applies to capital and any other reserves that we own.
Jim, I have a question.
Yep.
The way that it's presented on the absentee ballot, is there a way for, to explain to people that this is money we have already?
No.
You can't do that. Yeah. I didn't think so.
I get it out there now.
Because I think I think we're preaching to the choir on the call. That's why we need to
The 50
But this has been great planning.
It's okay. They can each tell people. Yep.
Banner on the website. Jim, can I ask a question? When can people expect to receive the ballot?
The post office has run a number of different workshops to basically profess their support for this process, and they're going to be right on things that arrive in their territory that have to be turned over quickly. So if this is in the mail on May 29th, we are paying a little bit extra to do this through this mailing house, which is actually going to take everything that we do and bring it right to the Melville Post Office, which apparently, that's where it ends up anyway. So it goes from 4346 to 47. So we're racing a link in the chain there. It should get there within a day or two because they know how important this is for school districts in general. Schools, some school districts may have put the ballots in the mail already because they may have adopted at the end of last week. It really depends on when their adoption occurred. We're probably right in the middle of that process. The last day a school district can adopt is May 21st. One of the reasons I wanted to do it tonight, Monday, first thing tomorrow, actually, when this meeting is over, depending on where we fall here, Joanne is going to get that ballot right out to the mailing house, the printer that's working with us. And the mailing house is going to start almost immediately in terms of printing, and we will, we will probably get that ballot out before the designated date of May 29th. That helps.
More than likely, people will get it by June 1st at the latest.
Keep their eyes open.
Yeah, I'd say by then, and I'll say the same thing I've said all along. Once you get it, turn it over quickly because we have to have those ballots in hand by 5:00 PM on June 9th where they don't count.
Yeah, 29th is a Friday. Right.
Yeah, it's not, it's not when they're postmarked. It's when they're received. So we'll be at the post office at 5:00 PM on, and it's going to the PO box. So 5:00 PM on June 9th, Tuesday, June 9th, we'll leave that post office at 5:00 PM on the nose with everything that's left.
Yeah. Do we have any other? Oh, you're going to go still.
Okay, contingency, which is obviously not a place we'd like to be. We managed to get to where we are today with, with, you know, we're, we're at the surface of the bone here. So if the budget is not, if the budget does not pass, this is a one-and-done deal. It's a one-shot deal. It's not like other years where if it failed, you'd have a revote at a, at a particular time, particular date. This is not that situation. Whatever happens now is what stays. So it doesn't pass, we're essentially adopting a budget with the same tax levy that exists in this year's budget. 0% increase, no exclusions. The administrative cap requirement stays as it always has. It's got to be a certain percentage. Can't exceed that from the current year, 1920. We are automatically taking out 495, 932, and equipment that all comes out. And those are, there are some things in there that we do need. But with that pulled out, we still need to find another 1.453 million to to get to where we need to be. And that's where we've got to cut into the bone a little bit further. And we have some thoughts and plans in that regard, but that's, that's, it's going to require cutting into program. That's what it looks like. That bottom right corner is the difference between the recommended budget, the 2021 recommended budget and the contingency budget. And again, 495, almost 486,000 of that is in equipment. And the rest of it would have to be taken from where the money is in the school district, and that is in program and staff and benefits. Three important dates, obviously, tonight. The board is in the position to adopt the budget. Public budget hearings scheduled for Monday, June 1st. Legal notice will be going out very shortly. And Tuesday, June 9th. While they've designated it as the date of budget vote and election, you're really voting before then. It's all absentee ballot, and once again, those ballots must be received by 5:00 PM on that Tuesday. They arrive Wednesday morning with a postmark of June 9th. They don't count. So again, I encourage and I advise, you get it, complete it, return it as quickly as possible.
So Jim, I just, I remember the last, our last meeting, I had mentioned about trying to get the word out to the public and about you potentially putting together a video like you did last year or something to that effect, or a town hall. Or happy, any more thoughts on that?
Well, I'm, we've been working on a budget brochure. So the brochure that we've put out the past couple of years is not going to be mailed, just based on the expense related to the absentee ballot process. I will be happy to put a video together. In addition, but the brochure will be posted on the website. I'm going to finalize that tomorrow. Obviously, we can't do it until the budget is adopted. But the next day or so, we'll have that up as well.
Okay.
It'll be the hardest part of this, getting the word out.
Yep. Other thing I wanted to mention is that apparently there will be still a kind of a meet the candidates by the PTA Council that I'm aware of. And you're sending out something on that tomorrow that they're going to have it on Tuesday, May 26th, 7:30 or something?
Going to be run by the PTA. I'm just going to post it on the website.
Okay.
And probably, there'll probably be an article on the website as well as a number of postings on the various social media platforms that we use.
Okay.
It's going to be the hardest part. It's a quick turnaround, and we don't have the traditional avenues for getting the avenues for getting the word out. The face-to-face is obviously important. Some of the mailings that would typically go out will not go out in the same manner as they have in the past due to time constraints and, and expense. We'll just try and do this as best we can. We also have to be careful about reaching out ways that are exclusionary. So it's not something that, you know, I, if, if I put out something via robo-call, not appropriate because it's only reaching a certain segment of those who are eligible for voting and they may be more likely to vote one way or another. It's just not something that a school district should be involved in. So anything we do has to be in a format that reaches everybody who lives in the school district community. So something on the website, yes, everybody has equal access.
Grassroots is going to help though, too. For everybody that's listening to this meeting, obviously if you could remind your neighbors, if you could remind the friends, your PTA mom friends, you know, let people know to keep an eye out for these ballots and to, like Jim said, turn them right back around and put them right in the mail so that we
The other thing on this agenda item, you have the resolution. It's very easy to open up like this. So there is your budget number, also the property tax report card. Which basically, difficult to see here, but it basically takes the numbers that you've already seen in the budget presentation and in the budget draft, and it puts them in a form that is to be submitted to the state. And this is all public, so it can be opened right from board docs.
Very good.
Jim, one thing I noticed as we're projecting a 200-plus student decrease in enrollment or least reportable enrollment in that report card. I was just wondering what was driving that. That just normal fluctuate going up. This is the first one I think I've seen going down.
I think it's, it's
You look at 4911 to four, oops, you two, no, up to top, 4911.
I can't see. It's small. There it is. I think we have to look at that number again for 19, for 2021, because I think that there are parochial school enrollments, private school enrollments that are not in there.
Could be. I mean, I know these are just your best guess. So I was just wondering if you had any, so.
That there's not going to be a 200-plus decrease in kids as far as we can tell. Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Jim, before I, you know, ask for a motion in a second, can you just give me the bottom dollar budget amount because it's not specified in the, you know, it's upon recommendation, you know, from that?
The bottom, the one, this number right here?
Yeah, yeah. Can you read that for me? Because it's blocked by my other screen.
Yes, 135, 938, 167.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, that's great. So I'm gonna, is there anything else that you wanted to listen on?
Before you do that, I'm going to stop sharing for one second because I do want to look at something. Okay, so what I'm going to recommend that we do in that enrollment for 2021, using all school types where it says 46, what does it say? If I'm looking at a 4670?
Yeah.
I'm going to replace that number with a 4,930, which is directly from East School. So Joanne, if you could note that, this number right here?
And Jim, the reason I didn't bring that up earlier is I know it's really just your best guess.
It is because
Not helpful for anything.
We have no idea in terms of kindergarten numbers. So we're assuming that whatever, whatever comes out in grade 12 would be replaced in kindergarten. So it's an inexact science, but I think what we've done in the, in the past is use the all public school numbers. And it, it looks like the 4670 was taken just from certain transportation oriented and the public school system, eight schools here. So the correct way to do this would be 4911 to 4930.
Good.
And just so you can actually, I'm going to Here's the number right here.
Yep, 4930.
Okay.
Great. All right, should I, should we proceed?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt a budget for the 2021 school year, 2020, 2021 school year in the amount of 135,938,167 to be placed on the ballot for the June 9th, 2020 annual vote and election. It is further recommended that the Board of Education approve the associated 2020, 2021 property tax report card. Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Motion from Tom.
Thank you. And it looks like a second from Christine. Any comments or questions before we go ahead and vote? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you very much, everybody. All right, so.
I was just going to add a comment after. I just wanted to say like, in case people weren't here last meeting, I don't want people to think we don't discuss the budget. Like, we fully discussed it.
Oh, that's a good point.
So I just want to make that
We discussed it to the point where we had a really long meeting. We discussed it so much, if I remember correctly. So that is a very salient point to, to make. Thank you, Christine. Okay, so what is that? That brings us to personnel. What happened to? Oh, sorry, everybody. Yeah.
Personnel.
Yeah, all right. So be it.
All right. So I'm asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedules eight and 10.
Wow, that is very quick. Okay, we have that. We had a chance to look at it. Can I get a motion to approve personnel items?
No.
Okay, Mill and Xavier. Any comments, questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. All right. And Dr. Acker, I believe we're to you.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items H through J on this evening's business agenda.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've got those items in front of us. Can I get a motion to approve the business items for tonight?
Motion from Linda.
Motion from Linda, and I think I got a second from Tom. Any comments or questions for Dr. Acker? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Very good. Okay, and Christine, I don't know, you have it in front of you. We had some donations, I believe.
I can see it.
You know what? If you can't, I definitely can.
Go ahead. You read them. I can't see.
Okay, let me get down to them. So we had a donation from the Huntington class of 1969. It's a request to a sec. So we accepted a donation tonight of $3,050 from the Huntington class of 1969. This donation will credit the class of 1969 reunion scholarship award in the trust account. And we want to thank them very much for that donation. We also have a donation from the Suffolk Association of School Business Officials, and it's a donation of $500. The donation will be credited Suffolk Association of School Business Official Scholarship Award in the trust account. So that's for another additional scholarship award, and we thank them very much. Thank you to all of our generous donors. Okay, so that brings us to the second public commentary. If anybody out there has any comments or questions at this point, Mr. Polansky is going to start looking to see if anybody is out there for a comment.
Got it. So James.
Hi, James.
Hello, everybody. How, how is everyone? Glad to see people are safe and sound. It's good to see. I just actually just wanted to take a moment as the, the president of the ATH to just say, we really do encourage everybody to, to get out, support this budget. It is, you know, these times are difficult. I know there are concerns, but I, you know, it, it's just imperative. If you, if you have a budget that forces us to cut program, to cut staff, to cut what, what our students need, this is not the time for that. This is, I think, as Mr. Polansky alluded to, you know, this is a, this is a time for us to try to move forward as best we can with this. And there may be some unexpected costs as far as, you know, the, the cleaning and the keeping people safe and the materials that are needed for that. So we really do encourage everybody to support this budget. So thank you.
Scrolling through.
No problem. Take your time.
Hold on. Raise your hand again. I can't find you.
It's a phone number. It's a 516236 number.
I didn't see it.
I don't see one.
It was up for a minute.
Maybe the person decided that maybe they
Got it.
Still up.
Oh, there you go. Good.
Okay, you're on.
Hi, everybody. Susan Tully calling. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for all of working as hard as you probably are right now, trying to get through all this. One thing, I, I step back and I haven't, I haven't been to meetings in a while, but you know, I, I step back and I look at 136 million dollars and I hear all the uncertainties that are going on and that, you know, we're flying by the speed of our pants. That's an awful lot of money. So one of my first questions is this cut by New York State of 1.8 million dollars, is that confirmed or could that change? And then second of all, most of that is made up by the release of reserves. And I guess the question is, once we use these reserves, what potentially happens in future years for things like unfunded pension costs because the stock market has dropped so significantly? Will we be hit the net in 2021 and 2022, like happened about 10 years ago? So those are my questions right now.
Thank you very much, Susan.
I'm going to answer, I'm going to answer some of those. And Susan, if we run out of time, feel free to give me a call in the office at any point. I'm here pretty much around the clock. First and foremost, in terms of the state aid question, right now that is, it may be an underestimate. It's very difficult when you don't have the most recent state aid run in your hands. So the way this is working at the state level, based on the governor and the division of budget, there are four measurement periods, and I can probably explain this in greater detail tomorrow. But to give you a sense, first measurement period was from April 1st to April 30th. So we had a state aid run that was presented to us at the, at the end of March, and it was following the impact of the pandemic. And what it did was it reduced the state aid that we had expected to the level in the current year's budget. And the way that happened is it cut state aid by X number of dollars and then replaced it with what's called a pandemic adjustment based on one of those federal relief packages that was designated for schools. This, this goes back weeks. It's not the one that people have been asking for most recently. Based on revenue, state, state, New York state revenue between April 1st and April 30th, we were supposed to get a revised estimate on aid according to what the state then believed they would be getting at the end of April based on the impact of, of the COVID-19 pandemic. And that has not yet been provided. We have been told to expect a 20% cut in aid. Hasn't happened yet. What we built in was a 15% cut to foundation aid. It could be more than that. It, it probably will be at least that. We can't confirm that until numbers are provided based on what happened between April 1st and April 30th. Then there are three more measurement periods where the governor has provided the division of budget, the authority to reduce or to alter state aid estimates once again during the year based on revenue expectations and, and what they believe they'll be receiving or what they have received at the end of periods from, I mentioned April 30th, the first measurement period ended. Next one is from May 1st to June 30th. The third measurement period is June 30th to December 31st. And the final measurement period is from January 1st to March 31st. Those are all times at which the division of budget can further reduce the aid. So there's a lot of unknowns here and we're unfortunately in a position that we haven't been in, in forever with, with respect to not knowing exactly where we're going to be when a budget is adopted and ultimately put forward in front of the, in front of the voters. The other question that you asked is a very good one in terms of use of reserves. There are some things that we did not have to spend on at the end of this year. Some of that can be used to replenish what we have anticipated using above and beyond what we would be using if this hadn't happened. Don't think it's going to replace it all. But we're also in terms of reserve use, trying to keep an eye toward the future and making sure that we can meet our obligations. Yes, if, if the market takes a tumble and, and there are certainly impacts there that, that will be felt in the teacher and employee retirement systems, we have reserves there for that purpose. Will they last us five years under similar conditions? Probably not. But we do have numbers that we've come up with that we think will get us through the painful time for at least a year, two, possibly three. But it really depends on, on ultimately what we're receiving from New York State. So there's a lot of unknowns here and we're trying to do the best we can to, to keep our educational programs intact, but also keep our taxes at a level where, where people understand that, you know, we are, we are doing things in an economical way, but for the right reasons.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? So if, if the state cuts, in addition to the 1.8 million that I'm looking here, if the state cuts more and, and the taxpayers, the residents approve this 136 million dollar budget, how do you make up the shortfall? Is that something you can come back to the, you know, the taxpayers for? Or is that something you're going to have to then make cuts in operating costs?
It would probably be cuts. It would definitely be cuts to operating costs.
Okay.
Once a budget, once a budget is adopted, a budget is adopted, there is some flexibility on the revenue side of things. But you know, for the most part, we'd, we'd have, we'd have to economize as, as significantly as we could to meet those new cost obligations based on a reduction in revenues.
Okay. All right. And if, if it by chance, the 1.8 million shortfall is less, does that mean that you adjust the other reserves and give money back to the reserves? Or how does that work?
We could do a number of different things. It could be the reserves. It could be the appropriated fund balance that's brought down. It could be the tax levy that's brought down.
Okay. All right.
That's where the flexibility on the reserve side of things comes in.
Yeah. I, I, listen, I would, I would just say, and I think a lot of people are saying that, you know, everything that's going on in everyone's lives right now, to have to make this kind of decision by June the 9th with a couple of days, you know, process in this absentee ballot process seems a bit crazy.
Not going to argue with you at all.
Yeah.
Any of us would argue with you, Susan.
Yeah. I mean, you know, no one knows what's going on with the town of Huntington taxes or the county or the state. And yet we're, you know, being forced into this major decision. I, I mean, it's just, it's really insane. But anyway, thank you for your hard work.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I guess we'll open all the works out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm doing one more scroll. Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. That brings us to our final remarks by board members. So are there any comments or remarks that board members want to make before we adjourn and move to exec?
I will just make one statement, please, Jen.
Sure.
And that is I would like to thank the administration for being able to put together this basic moving, moving target. this basic moving, moving target budget, which I think does a really good job of straddling the line between trying to maintain programs while dealing with the very real fiscal uncertainties and I think certain shortfall in what would be normally anticipated state aid revenues. Thankfully for, for us, you know, we don't rely for a huge percentage of our programs on state aid, so it, it does make us a little bit less sensitive to it, but nonetheless, I want to thank everyone on the, in the school district staff who contributed to this very difficult budget season and the final product, which, which I think is a good one.
Here, here. I agree.
Well.
Just to throw in a final remark, thank you for that. Kathy and I participated in a webinar this morning. There's actually two of this, this week, one on the current financial crisis and on Wednesday, it's the future financial.
That's fun. Something to look forward to.
Was really uplifting and we're certainly looking forward to Wednesday. One of the questions, and just to go back to a couple of things that I was speaking to in response to Susan's questions, the, the other piece of this that's not quite predictable is if there is a twenty percent overall reduction in state aid, how that's going to be distributed among school districts. My guess and my strong belief is that it won't be twenty percent for every school district across the board for exactly what Bill just mentioned. There are districts that rely much more heavily on state aid. Cut them twenty percent, they wouldn't be able to function. So, this might be a situation where some, in that, in that scenario would get hit by a ten percent cut or even less and others may be more than twenty. So, that, that also remains to be seen.
All right, thank you, Jim.
You're welcome, I think.
I think so too. I'm not quite sure, but I think, thank you. All right, anybody else have anything to say before we move on to exec? All right, thank you to everybody that attended our meeting tonight. We really appreciate you showing up here and hearing out the information. Please get out and let your neighbors know that their ballots are coming and they need to be returned. Do us all a favor and get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you for your patience.
Do we need to make a motion?
No, because we need to make a motion to get into exec once we're.
You need to do that, you need to do that now.
Do I do it right now? Okay. Okay, so Bill made a motion. Can I get a second? Xavier, second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.